Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September 25th, 2023, Meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Zoning Board of Adjustment. It is 5:00 PM and we're going to get started. I'd like to start with introductions. My name is Rob Stewart. I'm the Chairman of the ZBA. And I'm going to start to my far left and have my fellow board members introduce themselves.
Tim Gillum.
Michelle Cooley, Vice Chair.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Linda Ford.
Mary Catherine Holt.
And if I could at this time, I'd like to recognize our city staff who are in attendance, starting with Ms. Emily Hayes, Associate Director of Planning, Mr. Jonathan Bowen, Neighborhood Resources Coordinator, Ms. Kim King, Associate City Attorney. And also joining us tonight, Mr. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. And in the back of the room, Mr. Kevin Jones, who is running on our audio and video for this meeting. The Board of Adjustment does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the Board have authority to rule on claims of equal protection of the law or the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. By virtue of state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows: to hear appeals from decisions of the zoning officer of the city, to grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council therein, also to grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions, a literal enforcement of the code would result in unnecessary hardship. No one factor determines what is an unnecessary hardship, but all relevant factors, when taken together, must indicate that the plot of the property in question is unique and that it cannot be put reasonably to a conforming use because of the limitations imposed upon it by reason of its classification in a specified zone. A working definition of an unnecessary hardship is as follows: the property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zoning classification. It must be a unique and peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature. And it must relate to the property and not to any personal issues. This includes economic, financial gain or loss. A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers a financial loss of a kind that is common to all of the property owners in the area. Circumstances that are not hardships include self-inflicted or self-created, just inconvenience, or a personal scenario. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, by virtue of state law and City of Tuscaloosa ordinance, does not have the jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, and/or enforce any term or condition of subdivision covenants and/or homeowners association rules or regulations. These matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the Board on any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA on any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. This is a public hearing. It is being recorded, videotaped, and is streaming live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as local cable TV. Proper decorum, civility, and respect for others is required at all times. There are sign-up sheets outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone. State your name and address for the record. All comments should be directed to this Board. No questions or comment are to be directed to city staff or to fellow members of the audience. I would ask staff to confirm for the record that all appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each case upon the docket of petitions now before the Board have been made in accordance with the law.
It has.
Thank you. The following procedure will be followed for each petition. This hearing is an opportunity for the petitioner to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the Board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. City staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the Board concerning the same. The petitioner or the petitioner's designated representative will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the Board. The Board will have a maximum, oh, excuse me. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. The four members of the public that are in support of the petition and four members of the public that are in opposition to the petition who signed up to speak will then be afforded an opportunity to make inquiries and comments. At the close of the public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to the comments if necessary. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. The Chair may then permit the public to respond, but only to any issues raised by the petitioner in rebuttal. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. At the close of public comment or once the Board is satisfied that it has received all relevant information on a petition, the Chairman will close further comment or discussion and the Board will then discuss the matter. The Chair will read into the record the motion to approve the request along with any conditions set by the Board, and the Board members will commence voting. Four votes are required to approve any petition, not a simple majority of the vote. As you can see in front of you, there are six of us here tonight. Only five are voting members tonight. And of that, again, just to reiterate, it takes four affirmative votes from the body of five voting members to approve any petition. If you are a petitioner in the audience, please leave the sign in your yard. City staff will be out as soon as possible to remove those. Any party agreed by any final judgment or decision of such Board of Zoning Adjustment may, within 15 days thereafter, appeal therfrom to the Circuit Court by filing with such Board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. The Board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda items. Do any of the members have a conflict of interest with any of the cases on tonight's agenda?
No.
No.
No. Okay, it looks like we have a minutes that were submitted. Ms. Hayes, to approve?
August 2023 synopsis.
Has everyone on the Board had a chance to review the August 2023 minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes to the minutes?
No.
Okay. If I could, have someone make a motion.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor of voting, starting to my left?
Yes.
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 The August 2023 minutes have been approved and passed. At this time, I would ask Ms. King to come forward and update us on the cases.
Thank you. Like I said, I apologize for the cough drop. We have one brief update. The appeal involving DC Social was dismissed on August 31st. That case is no longer going. We still just have the one currently pending case that has been pending since August of last year. No updates on that, and the city and the ZBA have not taken a position in it. So it's not something that we're actively working on, but it's still pending in court. But nothing, other than the DC Social, nothing new. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Board. So we'll start with our cases with Don Bastian. ZBA 9823 and ZBA 10223 have been withdrawn. Starting with our cases to be heard. ZBA 9923, the Hertz Corporation petitions for a special exception to operate an automobile rental agency on the property located at 608 Skyline Boulevard East, Zone B in Council District 7. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. There's an existing fresh value on this lot. And here's a closer aerial view of the property. And here's a view from the street. So this is this building right there, just for reference. And here's a view of that parking area. The applicable regulations, so our current code does group automobile sales leasing and rental agency into one group and just essentially is the retail business that sells leases or rents cars. The special exception criteria really only touches on properties that are adjacent to residential. So it's not very applicable to this site as it is surrounded by commercial. District attorney is requesting a special exception to operate a Hertz car rental. Per the petitioner, they plan to hire seven full-time employees. Their operating hours will be Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The lease at this location will provide this company with 30 parking spaces in the shared parking area. Do you have any questions for staff?
No, thank you. Okay, at this time, if the petitioner would come forward to the podium. And if you will, just please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Vericia Raffington, General Manager for Hertz for Alabama. And you said the address.
Your address, the business address is fine.
Okay, 4200 McFarland Boulevard, Tuscaloosa, Suite D.
If you will, just tell us kind of your business plan for opening and kind of tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing there.
Okay, yes, sir. So we, of course, are moving from where we once were down at Merchant down to this area here. We have a fleet of about 150 cars or so. We tend to keep a lot of them on the road being that we're the only Hertz location in this kind of Tuscaloosa vicinity. Right now, as she earlier stated, we are trying to grow the staff and the brand there as well, too. In years past, we've definitely been able to keep most of our cars on rent and haven't had, you know, need for 30 parking spaces, essentially. Outside of that, I will say that, right now, we are trying to just, just kind of grow that brand. We are, you know, just looking to, you know, help the community as well, too, by, you know, providing the rental car needs for both, you know, retail and insurance replacement rentals. We tap into both of those markets. So it allows us to really get the flexibility to get the cars on rent throughout the entire duration of the week, though.
And I'm not sure if I understood correctly. The location y'all have north of the river in Tuscaloosa, is it Merchant's Walk?
It was. We're no longer there.
So you're no longer in that spot?
Correct.
Okay. So this is a relocation.
Yes, sir.
And I see 30 places on the screen in front of you. The last bullet, y'all have 30 in your lease, 30 parking spaces in the shared parking out front to use. Did I hear you, what was, 150?
Oh, well, just total fleet, yes, sir.
Okay. But you've got, right now, you've got 30 in your lease to use.
Well, just that would remain idle at the location at any given time.
Okay, that's just what you keep in inventory.
Exactly. We probably won't always have that amount sitting, of course. The object is definitely to have customers in those cars.
Right.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? No? Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay. We do not currently have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. So this would be the opportunity, if you'd like, to come forward and speak for or against. Okay? That being said, we will close public comment and move to Board discussion, starting to my far left with Mr. Gilliam.
I see this is a great location for the Hertz rental. I mean, it's all commercial around it. It sounds like 30 parking spaces is enough. I'm in favor.
I agree. They're moving right where the action is in terms of car lots and rental cars. All that's happening on Skyline. It fits in with the plan, so I think it's a good move for the district.
Yeah, I as well. I commend the Hertz Company for staying within the city limits of Tuscaloosa. So I think that's seamless. You've been a good operator across town. And to Ms. Cooley's point, this is a very high-traffic count corridor near the interstate, Skyline and 82. So I think it's a good fit. There's plenty of room in that parking lot, and they're not intrusive as far as hours operating the business as well in a commercial zone. So I'm in favor of granting the special exception.
I have no issues with the petition in favor.
I have to agree. I am in favor of it. I think it's in a great location. I was a little concerned when you said 150 cars because I'm thinking you requested 30 spaces. But now that you explained it, thank you. I completely understand. I'm in favor.
Okay, if there are no other comments from the Board, I'm going to move to a reading of the petition and a following vote. In the matter of ZBA-99-23, the Hertz Corporation petitions for a special exception to operate an automobile rental agency on the property located at 608 Skyline Boulevard East, Zone B in Council District 7. Voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on to our next case, ZBA 123. Campus Properties LLC petitions for a variance from the residential district regulations on the property located at 1413th Street, zoned R4H, Council District 4. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. Here's a view of that house. So this house currently sits on one property with some apartment-style townhomes. So these are those townhomes. And you can see the difference is pretty clear between that historic home and these newly constructed townhomes that were built in 2013. The applicable regulations, Section 2434, Lot Standards, the R4 zoning district requires 6,500 square feet in lot area for single-family dwellings. In the R4 zoning district, it requires 65 feet in width. And then the side yard requirements for the R4 zoning district are an aggregate of 14 feet and the smallest width being 5 feet. Finally, there is a portion of the code that allows staff to make a front yard exception for properties along a strip of a road, but we are not allowed to reduce that more than 20 feet. Petitioner is requesting multiple variances from the residential district regulations in order to proceed through the subdivision process to create a legal non-conforming lot. The property currently consists of three multifamily apartment buildings and one single-family historic residence. Per the petitioner, the intent is to subdivide the property into two lots so the historic home can be sold, restored, and transformed from a student house into a family residence. Petitioner states the hardship derives from the existing building, parking, and exterior configuration that prohibits a subdivision which conforms to the zoning ordinance. The proposed lot will be approximately 45.6 feet in width and approximately 4,238 square feet in area. The proposed front yard along 13th Street will be approximately 16.7 feet, and the side yards will be an aggregate of 10 feet. So here is that proposed lot configuration. I will make note that in 2013, the ZBA did approve for these townhome-style apartments to have a reduced front yard to align with not only this historic home, but also homes going down 13th Street. Zooming in, this is the specific lot that is requesting the variances. So as you can see, this lot width is just below that 65 feet that we need for the R4 single-family home. In addition, the area itself is just under that 6,500 square feet. Along this street here, we can allow for a reduction. So that 16.7 feet is okay. This is where that front yard variance is needed as well. And then on the back of this lot, maybe I'll stop pulling this in and out. This right here is about 5 feet. So that is where that side yard variance is coming from. This lot is going to be considered a corner lot, so it has two front yards and two side yards and no rear yard. Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you go back to an aerial view of the entire block? Into the alley, right there?
Is that good?
That was good. In 2013, you said the ZBA approved.
For these two apartment-style townhomes that are facing 13th Street, a reduction. So the R4 zoning district requires a 25-foot front setback. So that allowed them to be 16.7 feet, which is exactly where this house is sitting as well.
What were the, do you recall what the lot lines were prior to this?
So it was originally some lines that were drawn like this that broke it into four. And in 2013, they went through and removed those lot lines to allow it to all just be one lot. Prior to that, in the early 2000s, there was some different lot configuration, but that was all done away with.
So is it fair to say the, prior to the 2013, the old lot lines that were there, if it was R4 zoning throughout, and I would assume the house is similar to the one that's left, original home, weren't complying then, they were non-conforming?
They were non-conforming, which is what we see a lot in historic districts. We see these homes that are built prior to the 1972 zoning ordinance coming in. I think I saw that this one was, this one was built in 1921?
And did you, I may have missed it earlier, the zoning map?
Yes.
So it's the only historic, all the abutting properties in the parcel are not historic?
Yes, so essentially with the way that this falls, all of this area over here is where that historic starts kicking in. And it's almost like it kind of runs through here. There's a break, and then this house right here is a little island itself. Just the house itself was included in that historic survey. So this entire property, just south of it and then over to the east as well, are not in the historic district. The property that it sits on now is considered part of the historic buffer, which is in the university residential district, but it is not historic.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
We did receive two comments in opposition of this application that were forwarded to you.
Members of the Board, I'm Robert Martin with Duncan Coker Associates, representing the property owner. This property owner was approached by an individual that wanted to buy this historic house. That's how this all came about. As said, we can't meet the zoning requirements for lot width or area. I did want to point out, if we can go back to the overall site plan. This historic house was built prior to the existing zoning ordinance. So the issue with getting the lot width is that house is eight feet off the right-of-way on 14th Avenue, which does not meet the setback requirements. We are meeting the setback requirements on the new lot line that we're creating. So if the house was built according to the zoning ordinance and was shifted over to meet that setback requirement on 14th Avenue, there wouldn't be an issue and we wouldn't be here tonight. But it wasn't. And, I mean, this is the only way that we can subdivide this property and sell this home and it be restored to a single-family residence.
The driveway for this existing home, the historic home, if my understanding is that right, on the 14th Avenue side is the egress for the off-street parking?
That's correct. They have two off-street parking spaces here, which meet the requirement. There's also on-street parking here. This is in a yellow curb, so people can park on 14th Avenue as well.
Any questions?
I'm just curious, how long is this, this house is empty?
It is currently.
Do you know how, it's just been occupied by students?
How long it's been occupied by students?
Well, how long has it been empty? I assume it was occupied by students prior.
I'm not sure if it was rented last year. I know it was not rented this past renting cycle in August, but I'm not sure about the year before.
Okay.
And again, the petitioner's been approached by a buyer who's interested in purchasing this.
That's correct. It's under contract contingent on this variance as well as the subdivision process.
As a personal home, do you know? I mean, not that it matters.
I know it is an individual, and that's what I've been told their intent is.
Intent is a personal home, not to come back in front of us?
I'm sure they wouldn't want to be tied to that, but that's the intent, is what I've been told.
Thank you. I think you neglected to give your address when you gave your name. If you would mind saying your address.
My address is 302 Merchant's Walk, Suite 250.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward at this time to speak either for or against? Okay, that being no, we will close public comment and move to Board discussion. But just before we move to Board discussion, Ms. Hayes, because this single home still has a historic designation, the only one there in the larger parcel, if the home, if this is approved and the home is sold, that stays at with it, R4 zone, R4 historic, correct?
Correct. It will, it will remain with that. So any, any work that they do to the house would be subject to the approval of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, so someone wouldn't have the option to tear it down without the approval of historic?
Correct. It would have to be approved by the HPC.
And then because of the limitations to apply, again, to put in any type of student housing, multifamily, they would be unable to because of zoning and the lack of.
Correct. The zoning ordinance would not allow, with these lot standards, to be able to build a multifamily dwelling. It'd have to come back before the ZBA to request for those variances.
Thank you.
You know, I don't really see an issue with this. I mean, you have someone looking, obviously wanting to restore the piece of property. Looking at the photos, it does need some work done to it, a lot of work. It's currently empty. It's not, doesn't have students. Not sure when was the last time students have even been there, but I can see the hardship in this, and I'm in favor.
I agree. I can see the hardship. It was built prior to 1972. In 1921, rules were different. I can see the hardship, and it needs to be subdivided. If not, how can you buy it or do anything else with it? So I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow Board members' comments. It's kind of an odd scenario of what's left on the block. It will maintain, if this is approved, it's, and subdivided successfully, it will maintain its historic protections. And you can't really do anything. If it was torn down, it basically wouldn't be a buildable lot. So I feel confident if someone's going to invest the money into this home, it stays there, keeps that status of a historic home, even though it's in an odd place by itself. But I'm in favor. And by virtue hardship, in this case, I think is a virtue. They can't do anything with it because it doesn't fit the current zoning, and they're unable to sell it and put it to a productive use for the community. So I'm in favor of granting it.
I agree with all the Board members, I'm in favor.
Well said, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll move to a reading of the petition and a vote. In the matter of ZBA-100-23, Campus Properties LLC petitions for a variance from the residential district regulations on the property located at 1413th Street, zoned R4H in Council District 4. Voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on to our next case, ZBA 10123. John Drain petitions for a variance from the sign regulations to construct two freestanding signs on the property located at 685 Skyline Boulevard, zoned B in Council District 2. So here's an aerial view. So here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view is right across from the theater. Chick-fil-A and Milo's are just west. Here's a view of the store, the existing business, and here are those signs. So this is the first one. Kind of back here, you can see that second one. These are two digital freestanding signs that exist today. Eligible Regulations, Section 24135 permitted and allowed signs. Number two freestanding signs, freestanding signs are limited to one per parcel, except corner or double frontage. In addition, no more than one electronic, digital, or video changeable copy sign per premises shall be visible from any one location. Petitioner is requesting a variance to maintain two signs that are currently installed on the property. Per the petitioner, the initial site layout did not include the signage, and the sign company failed to seek the necessary permits for the installation of the two signs. Petitioner further states that the signs are essential to the branding of the company. Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you go back to the photo of the signs, the way they are now?
Can you go back to the, I think, the last bullet point page? Okay, so per the petitioner, these were not in the original design plans for plan review?
That were approved by city staff.
That were approved, okay. So the petitioner, then, or the company installed these signs after the fact?
Correct.
And based on the ordinance, would either of these two be allowed had they been put in originally?
They would not be permitted per the ordinance. We only, we would consider these freestanding, as well as digital signs, so it would violate both of those ordinances. They do have an existing freestanding sign that is on the front corner of their property, but these would not be conforming to our zoning ordinance.
So the original sign was on the plan?
Correct.
permitted, but wouldn't have been from the very beginning?
If these had been on, that we would not have approved them. We would have sent them through the variance process if they desired them.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks.
Hello, my name's Rodney Ramsey. Actually, John Drain's my partner. So I'm one of the owners and operating partners. So it's basically a situation we found ourselves in. Unbeknownst to us, you know, we got a visit from the code inspector, and he basically said the signs were out of compliance. So like I said, the signs were installed by the sign company. You know, basically, we're asking for the adjustment simply because they're already installed and they're connected. And obviously, we can have them taken down, but they were part of the sign package the brand Slim Chickens required. So it wasn't something that we, you know, did a special for. It was a part of the standard sign package with Slim Chickens. So every Slim Chickens is going to have one or two boards depending on the drive-through lane. And if you notice in the picture, they're along the drive-through lane. They're not out front, but I understand the ordinance as far as how it's drawn up. But that's why they were, they were put in there, because the drive-through lane and folks being in the line seeing the promo boards. So that's where we are with it.
Now, I'm not real familiar, I did drive by there and look at them when I saw the case come up. Can you go back, Ms. Hayes, to the pic, or the graphic for the street level of the signs in question? So you don't order here, this is just a...
That's right, it's just a promo board.
Promo boards, okay.
Yeah, so, you know, you see the yard signs that we put out, but that's essentially just a digital form of that type signage. So there's no pricing and that type of thing on the boards.
So mainly just awareness, product awareness?
That's right, that's right.
It's got pricing, you said no pricing on it, it's got pricing right there, 25, 10 just...
Oh, my apologies. What I meant to say is it's not where they placed the order.
Yeah, right, that's where I was going. It's not part of the menu system, that's intact.
That's right, that's all I meant by that.
Okay. And if you could, Ms. Hayes, go back, I think, one more, that has most of the building, okay. So the sign was mentioned, it may or may not be in here, that was out front, a freestanding sign?
That's right.
So you've got that as far as...
The brand sign.
Right.
That's right.
And that's in, is in regulation height, I believe it's, Ms. Hayes, 25 feet? And then that looks like you've got some signage on the building as far as...
That's right.
Awareness of the building, okay.
Yes.
Was there, if this is required, I'm just questioning, if this is required of everyone in the chain, in the restaurant, as you as a franchisee?
Yeah, it's a standard package, yes.
Why was it not in the drawings that was submitted to the city initially?
That's, again, that is definitely a question we didn't, we don't know the answer to. It was sent with the sign package.
Right.
Just like I said, the standard sign package. I assume when the installer showed up outside of the plans, you know, they've installed this sign package before, and they just installed the sign.
But it's not required, it's just an option that they give you. So, because they can't require what the city...
Right, it's not required, but it is a part of the standard sign package. It wasn't a, an add-on or a special additional signs to the standard Slim Chickens package.
But most of the time, when you have a franchise and they have, they have to comply with whatever, they usually have it where it can comply to whatever the ordinance is.
Right, oh absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
So none of the drawings when you all built this facility had these signs in them? Anywhere in the drawings, in the plans?
Uh, no, sir. Like I said, this was just a function of the installer showing up. The sign package is there, and they know they get installed at the drive-through lane at Slim Chickens, so they install them.
Same installer do all the, all the signs for the Slim Chicken?
Uh, not all of them, but in this, in this area. Of course, we're new. Matter of fact, this location's the first Slim Chickens in the state. First time, first location in Alabama. And we chose Tuscaloosa, so. But that being the case, they have installed in other states, so. But it's not exclusive, and they don't do all of them.
Any other questions for Mr. Ramsey? Did you have anything else for us?
No, sir, that's our case.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for locating in Tuscaloosa, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. Does anyone else in the audience would like to come forward at this time? Okay, that being no, we will close public comment and move to board discussion, starting to my left with Mr. Gilliam.
I'm having a little trouble with this one, on this request. I mean, there's a lot of signs on the building, he's got freestanding signs. I assume as you get around, he's probably got a menu board up there with pricing as well. And, you know, he's also got his posters out. I just, you know, I'm having trouble with this, particular, proving this particular one.
I'm with this also, you know, with the variance, we've got to have a hardship. And so it's not a hardship if the contractor just kind of, just forgot to put it in the plan, and so we just went ahead and put them up. That's not a hardship, and to take them down is not a hardship, because then the sign people who mistakenly didn't do the right thing, they need to come back and do it. We appreciate Slim Chickens in town, Tuscaloosa's got, I like to have the first one in the state, but we have to follow the rules and regulations, because if not, all the other places around you are going to want to pay, put up signs, and we forgot to leave it in the, put it in the plans. And so I don't see the hardship here for this.
Yeah, I understand advertising, understand the intent, understand the corporate package, what makes, probably the standard package at all locations, ideally. Every municipality will have some variation, obviously, of ordinances. Shame on some alone, either, you know, in the design community for your plans who didn't show it, possibly didn't come in the sign package and articulated in a timely way, what have you, that happens, we understand that. But I think you have met, per your plans, when they were initially submitted for plan review, where things like this get caught. You know, you complied with sign heights and signage on the building, from what I understand from city staff. I went out and looked at it, I didn't have any trouble. I had to look for these signs, by the way, where they were, but I didn't have any difficulty driving as a customer down the thoroughfare or turning in, noticing, identifying you as Slim Chickens. I think that being said, you know, unfortunate it wasn't shown and caught early and any extra wiring expense and signage in the package, but it should have been. And maybe your consulting group for the next store needs to do a little deeper dive in their due diligence to look at existing municipal code. That being said, I do not see a hardship for this that would warrant granting a variance, so I'm not in favor of granting it.
I agree with all the board members. I fail to see a hardship, I'm not in favor.
Also fail to see a hardship, although we really do appreciate new business in Tuscaloosa.
Okay, if there are no other comments from the board, we will move to a reading of the petition and a vote. In the matter of ZBA-101-23, John Drain petitions for a variance from the sign regulations to construct two freestanding signs on the property located at 685 Skyline Boulevard, zoned B in, in Council District 2, voting with, to my left with Mr. Gilliam.
No.
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 The petition failed.
Okay, we'll move on to our short-term rentals for the night. ZBA 10323, Betty Polian Cheatham petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2816 3rd Street East, zoned R1, Council District 5. So here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning. This is over in Alberta, just northeast of Alberta Elementary. Here's a closer aerial view of that house. There are not any nearby active short-term rentals within vicinity map. Here's a view of the house, and of that driveway. Petitioner, along with Edwin Cheatham, petitions will be the primary contacts in case of emergency, and they will be available 24 hours a day. This is the petitioner's first experience managing a short-term rental. Security measures include keypad locks, as well as cameras on the surrounding homes. This house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The house is not owner-occupied, and the petitioner did state that family would use the home when it was not being rented short-term. Petitioner is requesting one to six adults and three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles based on driveway and off-street parking. Do you have any questions for staff? We did receive two written comments in opposition of this short-term rental application. And the petitioner is here.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Betty Polian Cheatham. Address is 2816 3rd Street East, Tuscaloosa, Alberta.
Ms. Polian Cheatham, could you either lean closer to the mic or bring it to you?
Okay.
I was having a hard time hearing.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. If you could, tell us a little more about your intentions and your plan, if this was approved.
Okay, if it's approved, we just wanted to do an Airbnb in this area because we have a lot of families coming to Tuscaloosa for various reasons. We want to make a little, them feel a little bit more at home with the more comfortable place to stay.
And from the report from staff, this would be your first venture into this business?
Yes.
In saying that, have you, and I may have missed on the previous page, have you put together a list of rules and regulations?
Yes.
And will those be posted?
Yes.
Communicated?
Posted and communicated. And we in a pamphlet in the house when they get there, online at the airbnb.com. It would be posted there as well.
Okay, and it looks like you and Mr. Cheatham will be responsible for any issues that come up?
Yes.
And you're available, it says here, 24/7?
Yes, we don't live far from it.
Oh, not far?
Maybe two or three minutes away.
And it looks like the home is currently not occupied for the time?
Right.
But is used sporadically? It is used occasionally?
No, it hasn't been used at all yet.
Okay. No, not in this business, but do you still have family at times, stay here?
Nobody has stayed there yet.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Cheatham?
I have a question for city staff. You may have already done this, and somehow I blinked. How many, are there short-term rentals in the area?
There are not. I'll go back to that vicinity map, they're not within... I didn't think I saw any. Between a five to eight hundred foot radius. It's a pretty large radius that we do these, but they are not any nearby active short-term rentals.
Okay. And then I have a question for the petitioner. In your statement, you said that occasionally some family, some people will stay there rather than...
No, we, at first, we were going to do that, just let a family member stay in there until we rent it out, but we decided against it. It's just going to be strictly Airbnb.
So thirty nights within, okay, thank you.
I have a question. The information said that you have cameras on the surrounding houses? Is it on your house or on surrounding?
On the surrounding houses, and we're getting it on ours. But right now, it's on all the surrounding houses.
Did you have anything else for us? Okay, thank you. It looks like we have one person, Mr. Vincent Nero, in favor to come speak.
Good evening. Vincent J. Nero. My address is 2816 3rd Street East. I live directly across from the property that's in question. I'm here to let everyone know that I know that the petitioners, I've known them their whole lives, especially Ms. Polian, Ms. Polian Cheatham. And they are good Christian people, and I know that they're going to do the right thing. I do have a camera directly in the front to see the whole house. And I just think if we approve this, it'd be a good thing for our area. We've had other owners at that property that didn't work out. We had a lot of problems. I just feel like the Cheatham would be good neighbors for us, and they will put the right people in their, in the house. And that's all I have, thank you.
Sounds like you're going to keep your eye on the place.
Oh, I keep eye on it, yes, sir.
Well, that's good. Thank you. Okay, that's everyone we had signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak either for or against? Okay, that being no, we will close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I have no issue with the short-term rental. Petitioner seems to have everything in line, she lives close by, I'm in favor.
It seems like straightforward, I'm in favor as well.
Yeah, I can't see any reason, based on what we've heard tonight and with the letters that were received, to not allow the opportunity for Ms. Cheatham to move forward with her application. If approved, again, following staff's comments, would follow that recommendation of a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, as stated, but I am in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
I'm also in favor. I think where the house is, it looks like there's plenty of space around it. It's not really detrimental to the neighborhood, so I'm also in favor.
Okay, if there are no further comments, we'll move to a reading of the petition and a vote. In the matter of ZBA-103-23, Betty Polian Cheatham petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2816 3rd Street East, zoned R1 in Council District 5, subject to the following conditions. If approved, a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of thirty nights, in a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Moving on to ZBA 10423, Jill Reeves petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2417 Prince Avenue, zoned R2, Council District 7. So here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning. Then a closer aerial view. There are a couple nearby short-term rentals, just north and east of this property. Here's a view of the house from the street. Moving around to the back of the property, and here's that parking area. Moving around to the back of the property, and here's that parking area. Petitioner, her real estate agent, Amanda Malone, and the petitioner's daughter will be the primary contacts in case of emergency, and they will all be available 24/7. This is the petitioner's first experience managing a short-term rental, but she has experience managing long-term rentals in Texas. Petitioner states they plan to install cameras and keypad locks for additional security measures. The house has five bedrooms and three bathrooms. The house is not owner occupied. The petitioner states that this is, they are planning to short-term rent during this time period before her daughter can move into the house full-time. Petitioner is requesting four to six adults and two to three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles, and the rules and regulations were posted online with the packet. Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you go back to the aerial, please? So Prince Drive along the side of the home goes down in dead ends into the house with the circular drive?
That's correct. So we've got a Prince Ave, a Prince Drive, and a Prince Circle on this area.
Lot of Princes.
Mm-hmm.
It's, the lot is wooded in the rear behind the home?
It is, that's correct.
So that's, they're, they're one lot all the way down the drive?
So that picture of where that gravel is, is right here, and the rest of this is just wooded.
Any other questions? Thank you.
We did receive one written comment in opposition to this application.
Okay, the petitioner would come forward, please.
Hello? Can you hear me? My name is Jill Reeves, and my address is 2417 Prince Avenue. And I am looking at, requesting to have this as a short-term rental. We initially purchased this in it, because of its proximity to the university for my daughter. She's in the Blunt Honors College at University of Alabama. And, yeah, that's what we want to do, is supplement the income. And the house looks much better than that picture. Like, the lawn has been mowed, and it looks much better, it's fixed up. We installed all digital key locks on all the doors just this week, and tomorrow the full security system should be installed. I believe it's been used as a long-term rental for college students for the past, I know the lady that I bought it from, at least the last six years. So we are hoping, the whole reason why I did this to begin with is, when we came to Alabama, we had a hard time finding a place to stay. And I'm on appearance Facebook page for Class of 2027, and everybody's talking about the ridiculousness of the pricing to find a rental. We actually, for this past week, for Family Weekend, had to stay, I forget, Bessemer, maybe is the town, like, that far out in order to find something that was affordable. So my plan is to, to rent this out as a short-term rental, and yes, I will profit from it, but I'm not gonna charge exorbitant amounts, and it's big enough where families can actually come in and see their students since, what is the number, like, eighty-five percent are out-of-state students here, and thanks for the great scholarship. But, so that's, that's our plan. I have since talked to a man, I'm in contact with a man named Tanner Ashcroft from Hamner Real Estate, as far as managing the property, since we are out-of-state. And my husband and I do plan on coming on occasion to stay at the property, just to do some work and get it ready and make it look nice. And obviously, we won't be renting it out while we're staying in at that, at those times. And I do have house rules and requirements. I'm gonna make sure that I have a contract with every single person, whether Tanner takes it over or I do it myself, that states, I need all the names of the people, and parents cannot rent it for their kids. Like, I want adults staying in the house. I have a cleaning lady who is very experienced with short-term rentals lined up to do the property, and I also have a man that manages a short-term rental in Duncanville, who has agreed to be a twenty-four-hour contact as well, that I will pay him if there is indeed an emergency. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Well, it sounds like you've done your homework and prepared for the endeavor. It said, from what it said, and I think the previous screen, you have experience with managing long-term rental properties?
I am. I'm a licensed real estate broker. I own a company in Texas for nineteen years, and I have several of my own personal properties. I actually have sold short-term rental properties to clients in Texas as well, but I have not managed those for them. I simply have sold them.
Well, I appreciate that, being candid. Yeah, I think based on what you've said, you've, you've answered a lot of the questions we normally ask. You know, one primary point, and you've covered it, right now, you're gonna, through the people you mentioned, your statement that you have someone to be that twenty-four-seven contact, that's of utmost importance to the city and assurances for the board to consider. There is someone there who can handle anything that may come up at the wrong time.
Right.
Or odd time. And you also mentioned a Mr. Ashcroft, who's come before this board several times in that capacity, that's very suitable, whomever you choose to use, who's got that experience. So I think based on that, I'm comfortable with your request. And also, if you could, Ms. Hayes, go back to the staff's recommendation for the six adults and three vehicles, and it's paramount they're parked off-street. Even if it's legal street parking, the city does not allow, in the practice of short-term rental, for any of your guests to park on the street.
Okay.
During that capacity.
We have, if, if you want, am I supposed to speak? Is it okay? Well, if you go back to the picture, so we, to the side there, and this is part of our project to do within the next couple of days, is to clean that really up, get rid of all that grass, because there are railroad ties there where people can pull in, and you can have the three cars there, and you could actually have more if you needed to, but we will like to restrict it to three vehicles.
Any other question for Ms. Reeves?
No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We do not have anyone currently signed up to speak for or against. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward? Okay, being no, we will close public comment and move to board discussion, starting to my left with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes, I'm in, I'm in a favor with this short-term rental. It sounds like petitioner's really covered all, everything basis-wise and plus then so on, so I'm, I'm in a, in favor.
I agree with my fellow board member.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with Ms. Reeves' statements and her plan moving forward, and I, I do commend you. We all live here, we're all citizens, but we're very aware of the pricing, and, you know, it's a free market, and all the power to the folks who can get it, feeds this community, the business that we get that's driven by the university. But it is nice to know there may be a reasonably priced option out there for folks who come in, because it, it is hard if you're coming here to visit your child who's in school, obviously a lot of expense, especially from out-of-state, so that is reassuring to hear that. But I am in favor of granting the request.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I'm also in favor.
Okay, if there are no other comments from the board, we'll move to a reading of the petition, followed by a vote. In the matter of ZBA-104-23, Jill Reeves petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2417 Prince Avenue, Zoned R2 in Council District Seven. If approved, subject to the following conditions, a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of thirty nights for a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, I'm gonna present these last two cases together. This is ZBA-10523 and ZBA-10623. Deanne Lack petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2222 Forest Lake Drive, Unit A and B, Zoned R1, Council District Two. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view of the property. We do have some nearby short-term rentals to the west and southeast. Here's a view of the shared driveway with the property just east of this. View of the house. This is considered a non-conforming duplex. This property is Zoned R1, but this is allowed to be used as a duplex with two units. Petitioner will be the primary contact in case of emergency. She lives part-time in Tuscaloosa and will be available 24/7. Petitioners have operated a short-term rental from this home and have not had any issues. Security measures include exterior cameras, front door keypad locks, smoke detectors, and CO2 sensors. Petitioner also states that guests will be provided with the owner's contact information as well as maintenance and cleaning company information. Each unit has two bedrooms and one bathroom. The units are not owner occupied, and petitioner states when the units are not being rented short-term, they will use it as an opportunity to do some renovations or improvements to the house as they're needed. Property was previously approved last year for four adults and two vehicles for each unit. Petitioner is requesting just that, and staff does recommend the four adults and two vehicles for each unit. Do you have any questions for staff?
So this is the renewal?
So essentially, what happened with this is the individual that came before the board originally is no longer in the short-term rental business, so the owners are actually coming in. It was a management company that originally came in and requested it.
Right.
So we'll treat it as new?
Treat it as new.
Okay. And when it was previously managed by the rental agency, were there any issues in that year that the city's aware of?
There were not, no. From my understanding, I don't believe the rental, the manager was involved in it very long into the process, so the owners have pretty much been facing this a majority of it, and they did not report any issues, and we did not receive any as the city.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Deanne Lack. My local residence is 303 Helen Keller Boulevard. Similar to the story that was just said, we have a daughter that's at school here. I'm an Alabama grad. My father purchased a home when I was here, so we always had a place for family to come stay. My husband and I realized quickly that we wanted to have a local residence here. We do have a son that will possibly go to Alabama Law School, so we are in town for quite a while. We have purchased two residences. The 303 Helen Keller is a condo that we stay in, we do not short-term rent, and we decided to purchase a second residence that we would like to run as a short-term rental. When we purchased it last year, last September, we had hired a company to manage it for us. Before we had the home renovated and ready for rental, they went out of business. So we took over. I believed that it was in my name, that this, the earlier petition was in our name. It was not. I did not know that. We were, we were told, Emily, let us know that. So we quickly tried to rectify it and get in here to go ahead and come before you one more time. We do have our business license for each side. We have a local cleaning company, we have a local management company, or maintenance company, and we've also worked with our neighbors next door, and they bring our trash in and out for us, because we don't always have people coming and going on trash day. So they're, they're working with us, they're kind. It's a couple of college students that are helping us with that. I think that I might have covered everything. Oh, I do have one statement, though. So it's 2222 and 2224. There's really the two, it's very confusing.
Yes, I essentially, I was gonna talk to you about that, and I'm very sorry that I didn't before now. Essentially, with the way that we issue addresses as the city, we only give one address for the parcel. I know that yours is deeded in that way. What it was done previously, under the previous manager, was just that, so that's why I did it that way. We can maintain it as that. We can talk tomorrow about whether or not we could issue that additional address.
Okay. Yeah, I know that, like, the water company sees just the 2222, but our business license are listed with the two addresses. And then the 2224 is actually three cars, it's a larger parking. So I think our original petition allowed us six.
The, I know that you originally requested for, the manager had requested for six-three for the other unit. What was previously approved was four-two for both of them, just on the parking. If you want to change that request to request for six-three, it would be up to the board to make that discretion.
How many bedrooms?
It's two bedrooms, each side has two bedrooms. The one side that has the larger parking, we've actually put in a sofa bed.
So we really go by the bedrooms?
Mm-hmm.
And then the parking kind of corresponds with that? So that's why it's the, because to have six people in a two-bedroom house and a one bathroom, that's a lot of people, so.
Yeah. And just to clarify to you, this is just adults, so if, if they had four adults and two children, and the two children could stay on the level?
We do, we do have on our, we have, Evolve helps us manage the, the rental side of it, but everything else is done personally and locally with communications. Evolve just manages the, the publication in, in that, but we'll have to change that because it does say six currently on our website, but that's easy to change.
As long as it says six individuals, we're okay with that.
Okay.
It just can't say six adults, specifically say adults.
It says six persons.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay.
Any questions?
In your petition, you said that you're here part-time?
Correct.
Are, if you're not here and your home is being short-term rented, who would be the person that would be available for any problems?
So depending on the problem, we do have a local cleaning company, and he is very quick. He answers me quickly. He's gone over to help us with issues that needed to be cleaned or changed or something not found. And we also have our local maintenance, and he's local as well as his apprentice is local. So we, we have Greg and Cole are phenomenal. My sister, my sister, my daughter is here. Okay. So occasionally, she has gone over to handle something. I don't send her over when there's someone that I don't know renting, though. Understood.
Now.
Thank you.
Or, but just to clarify, along with Ms. Ford's question, who gets the call, even if you're in town or not?
I do.
Okay, so your numbers, you're the primary contact 24/7?
Correct.
365, okay.
Yes, yeah. And they have my email and my phone number, my cellphone.
And I didn't ask you this earlier. What was your experience, the times that you did rent it, when it was rented over this past year initially? What, what kind of experience did you have with the guest?
Oh, we've had a phenomenal experience. We have several people who are, have come back. They, they rented multiple times. We've made some friends, and, and we've, we have a five-star on one side and a 4.8 on the other because someone couldn't find an outlet in the restaurant in the bathroom. So, yes, we, we've had very good feedback.
That's good to hear, and that's, we oftentimes, I know I do, and several of my fellow board members as well, will see people out that we've approved, and I typically, after the fact, ask, how was your experience? And more often than not, the people I've spoken with that we have approved, who've engaged in the rent, short-term rental activity, have had very positive experiences, and also, to your point, have become friendly and converse with some of their guests, so that's, that's good to hear.
Yep.
Any other questions? No. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no one, surprisingly, to sign up to speak either for or against, and I think we're out of participants, potential participants in the audience, so we're gonna move to close public comment and move to board discussion, starting with Mr. Gilliam.
I'm in a favor of granting the four-two per staff recommendation.
I agree as well.
Yeah, I think this is a renewal, same owner. Ms. Lack articulated well her plan and experiences and, you know, how she will handle things forward, so I feel comfortable with that. And just a question for staff, Ms. Hayes, I see the addressing, I know the city, how the city issues 911 addresses. I still need to read these as A and B?
Correct.
To 2222?
It won't affect the way things are licensed or anything like that. We, as the city, will still consider it the same property regardless.
And read these independently for two votes.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
All right, if there are no further discussion, we will move to a reading of the petitions and following votes. In the matter of ZBA-105-23, Deanne Lack petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2222 Forest Lake Drive, Unit A, Zoned R1 in Council District Two, subject to the following conditions, a maximum of four adults, a maximum of two vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of thirty nights, and a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
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 The petition passed. The petition passed. In the matter of ZBA-106-23, Deanne Lack petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2222 Forest Lake Drive, Unit B, zoned R1 in Council District 2, subject to the following conditions, a maximum of four adults, a maximum of two vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of thirty nights in a one-year probationary period, voting with Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
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 The petition's passed. Ms. Hayes, are there any other items of business?
There are not.
Okay, thank you. We stand adjourned.